Do you want me to ask him to speak up first? Richard, or you want me to go to the other end?
I'm ready to come out.
Yeah.
All right, motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
So we've got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed with the like sign. And we took no action in executive session. So continuing on additional business. Ms. Oster, I believe Mr. Slade's bringing some folks back in. So we wait and we'll bring the crowd back inside.
I cannot believe he's still here.
Nothing else?
Yeah, I heard.
That all?
Yeah. I can't even believe that.
Hope I don't ever get there. Hope I don't ever get that point. This is what I'm having.
All right. I'm glad I sent that picture. That's less than these, aren't they? I got you.
Good morning.
Yeah, that's good.
Good morning.
Yeah, Bridget told me that before I come in here today.
We don't have any etiquette up here.
You doing all right?
Good.
Good.
It's good to see you. Yes, sir.
How are you, sir?
Good.
Good, how are you, sir?
I got it. I'm probably.
Put my cigarette out.
I don't want to start now.
Mr. Morrison.
There you are. That's it.
Hello, Scobani, how you doing?
Oh, he is in. My goodness.
You ready to go? Wait on chairs.
Yeah. When you do that, you're good.
Good. I'll let Richard get his stuff straight.
Rules.
Anytime before I start talking to these guys, she doesn't know.
Before. Hey, man, how are you?
Right.
Good. I saw that picture of the red cowboy hat on. I'm thinking, I wear that hat?
I'm doing good, sir.
I found it laying around the parking lot.
Hello, sweetie.
How you doing?
My favorite. How are you, sir? Doing good. You doing good? You looking good. Absolutely.
You don't really know or not, huh? You know, the longer I live, the more people I see just like me looking like.
We're good. That's the best way. All right, we'll continue on under additional business. And look, first off, thanks for everybody coming over here. We invited y'all in here today to kind of explain to us and review for us the new rulings and all that's come out in July of 2017. Judge Mack, if you don't mind, we'll put you up first and...
That's fine.
...open it up to you.
Okay. She says we're recording, so I gotta be careful.
Again, we appreciate you guys' time for stepping over here this morning, so...
Well, we thank y'all for hearing us. This is really primarily about Justice Court, Judge Richard and all that. But I, what I just gave you, I don't expect any of you to read. That's why I bought an extra copy for you to make your lawyer read.
All right, thank you.
But that sort of sets the stage for a lot of what's going on. The new criminal rules that came out in July, we worked on them for six years. We handed them off to the Supreme Court. They worked on them for six years and what came out, we didn't recognize. But that's okay. They had a different way of thinking about things, and that's their privilege. But one of the things I had urged them not to do is make, for example, discovery available in Justice Court. You talk about something that slows down the process. But they did it anyway, and I didn't get a vote. That's all right. But one of the, that's just one of the issues that has caused a major change in the way courts operate. They can even get justice in municipal court. So one of the things that the rules told us to do is make arrangements to have a system to get lawyers for people that need them and to get bails for people that are in jail and can't make bail. That's what that order is about. We did an order back in December, all five judges, the three circuit judges and Tom and I, that says, here's how we're gonna work this system. That's what that explains. But one of the major pieces of that is, there's a paragraph in there that says, when you arrest somebody, you get your paperwork over here to the DA. And if we go 90 days, and there's a 90-day review that's built into that, this doesn't have anything to do with Richard and him, this is something the circuit and county courts have to do. That 90-day review, we have to review anybody that's been in that jail longer than 90 days and hadn't been prosecuted. So we had a meeting. The sheriff was there. He was in fact the most important part of the meeting because he was boldly willing to stand up and say what we had urged him to say for a long time, and that is, if you keep leaving your people in my jail and you don't do something with them, after 90 days, I'm gonna start sending the bills to you for their time there. Now, when you put skin in the game like that, it got their attention. We've been flooded over in the DA's office with paperwork. Here, let's get this case going. Now, folks, we need that. It'll help empty out the jail. It'll keep us from having people in there that don't belong in there, review their bonds, let them get out, or else just say, no, you don't get out. But somebody, we've appointed them a lawyer. The lawyer has stood up with them and said, this person needs a bond. We've had a hearing. All that kind of stuff is what's in that order there. But the trickle-down of that is the same thing is gonna hit these Justice Court judges and especially Richard's office. Not only do you have discovery, but you basically got to have a lawyer for anybody you're planning on sending to jail. That's a whole lot different than what it used to be. And so I just wanted to give y'all kind of the background of, this isn't Richard's fault. It ain't my fault. I tried to keep it from happening for the Justice Court, but wasn't any good, didn't work. But they are gonna have a, they're gonna have a tremendous impact from these new rules. And so, like I say, I would expect any of y'all to read that. I wouldn't if I didn't have to. But I wanted Craig to have it, and we might even give you two, you know, your outside paid aces there, they might want to look at it too. Because it does impact somewhat on the issues like holding somebody in contempt. We have to do the same thing that Richard and them have to do now. We can't hold them in contempt for not paying a fine unless we have a hearing and appoint a lawyer for them. I don't know, y'all may not realize, that is an absolute sea change from the way it used to be. Used to, you'd just come in there and ask them a few questions. Why hadn't you paid? Well, I've been too busy buying cigarettes, paying my cellphone to pay my fines. You go to jail. And all, that's all gone. Used to be fun, it's gone. It's not gonna happen anymore. So those are the kind of things that have been brought about come July the 1st of last year. And that's all I wanted to tell you. Richard may have some questions or comments later, but that's what that's about. And I could just tell you, in our courts, y'all have been gracious enough to provide public defenders who cover not only Circuit Court, but who also cover my court. And I think there's five of them. I believe that's who rotates through my court. And they're fine. They're able to handle this. And we're not needing any additional assistance at circuit or county level to get this done. One of the things that caused, for example, I'd say one other thing, Richard, and I'll let you talk. The 48 hours is the rule. You have to see anybody that's been locked up within 48 hours. And by have to see, a judge has to see them. Now, that's a big change. And so I used to do hearings on Tuesday mornings. Now I do them on Tuesday mornings and Thursday afternoons to be able to meet that standard. But that's not that big a deal for me. If you've got a couple of hundred cases a month, I mean, a week coming in, like some courts I won't mention, that's a big deal. So at that, I'm gonna leave it. Unless y'all got some questions, I'll let Richard and them fill in.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Not necessarily on your behalf, it's curiosity that I have. Judge, my anticipation that at some point we'll be hearing a discussion from Justice Court about public defender assistance.
Oh, absolutely.
So can you address your opinion as far as the need for that and possibly how that might be dealt with?
I didn't put him up to asking this question, but that's one I'm sure Richard was gonna cover, Craig. There's a case way back, I won't even mention the name because it cost this county a bunch of money, where in the exchange between the county jail and a city, somebody stayed over there an extra 200 days and it cost us a lot of money. One of the things this system is gonna do is keep that from happening. Everybody's gonna know who's supposed to be getting a hearing, who's supposed to be getting a lawyer, and all those kind of things. So that's gonna make, it's gonna make a big difference. But you can't do that without public defenders. And that's why I told you, hours of work and fine, but the need for public defenders and probably even more prosecutor help in the Justice Courts is where the major impact of this change is gonna come. I mean, they're just gonna, they're gonna have to basically have somebody there every day in court. Now, it won't be all day every day, but it'll be every day. Because anybody that wants to plead or anybody that wants a trial, they're gonna have to have public defenders for that now. They have been, I think, and Richard can clear this up, they have been ad hoc, just appointing a lawyer. If somebody says, I want a lawyer, they had to point out side lawyer, and you paid them, I don't know how much you paid them, whatever, they were rating $200 a case, or whatever it is. And y'all been paying it piecemeal like that. And it may be more expensive to have designated public defenders, but it's also gonna be much more defensive for, I mean, that bunch of, Oxford, also known as the MacArthur Justice Center, they're looking over their shoulder trying to make life miserable for everybody. And right now, we've got a good relationship with them. They're not looking at Rankin County for anything, and we don't want them to start looking. Their director up there is a friend of mine they used to practice at the U.S. Attorneys with. And so we've been very proactive. We've sent him copies of all that stuff, showing him what we're doing. And so we're trying to be ahead of the game and stay out of their rifle sights. So that, does that answer your question? Yeah. It's gonna take a lot of public defenders, not a lot, but it's gonna take dedicated public defenders to do that into Justice Court.
Yeah. And you mentioned some additional prosecutor work.
Yeah. If we're in, and if we're gonna have to file, if the prosecutor's gonna have to file every contempt motion to collect an old fine, that's something we didn't have to do. The clerk would just issue them, you know? They didn't pay it, we'll issue them. So yeah, a lot of those kind of changes that Richard can address better than I can, but...
So at the circuit county level, the, through the district attorney's office, the contiffs are handled through the district attorney's office?
Exactly, yeah.
The clerk doesn't handle any of that?
No.
It's all done at prosecutor level?
Absolutely. And if it's a contempt from a lower court, then that lower court prosecutor comes in and makes the petition. If a case, once it gets appealed to me, the lower court loses jurisdiction. So if it's in my court and they've done a contempt like not paying as I've ordered them to, still that lower court prosecutor's responsible for initiating the contempt petition.
Would you assert to these guys that any system that mandates or requires that the clerk actually handle all of this contempt work, that that's...
That's gone.
Should not be done.
No. It shouldn't have been done anyway, but they made it really clear now that no can do anymore. It puts a clerk in a, I mean, just, the thing is, you gotta look at the tail end. The tail end is, this person may end up in jail because they're not paying. Well, who started the path to jail? It needs to be the prosecutor, not the clerk, just pro forma signing. It was never a good idea, it may have been done, but it ought not be done anymore thanks to all this new stuff.
Gotcha.
All right?
Thank you, Judge.
Any other questions? I'm gonna hang around.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, Judge. Richard, a few things to say?
Yes, sir. I'll probably find it.
Okay, there's a, did you give this to these guys in the peanut gallery?
I'll give you, no, no.
We got it.
Yeah.
I didn't get one.
That's what I will.
Boy, that's a book.
Yeah.
55, thank you.
Can I get one, Richard?
Keep mine. All right. Man. Scanned through there, right? Just give me a minute, I'll scan through it, and I'll be right there with you.
All right, good morning, Richard. Thank you for coming in very much, and we'll give you the floor.
I guess the best way to open this is by saying what Judge McDaniel said, and I would use it in a different vernacular. In the past, basically what we operated on was pay or stay. Pay the fines or go to jail. What has happened in the last year or so is through the federal court system, including the United States Supreme Court, they have basically examined all of that. And despite what some people might say, you can't lock somebody up for not paying a fine, that's not true. You can. But you now have to do certain things. They've set that out very, very clear, and that's what this big packet is. I want to back up and tell you how we got here. This all came out, the first time we got any notice of this was the city of Moss Point. And there's an old saying in law enforcement, bad police work makes bad law. And what was happening down there was, is they were setting bonds on everybody was a cash bond. Can't pay the cash bond, sit in jail. And they weren't having hearings or any of that sort of stuff. So out of that started, that was the first one that started going. Well, when that came out, I looked into it, I was alarmed by that. And I looked into it, I met with Richard Lawrence, the attorney for the Sheriff's Department. He and I have a longstanding process when these things come up. We pulled all of those cases that were out of the Moss Point thing and all of the federal Supreme Court, U.S. Supreme Court cases and all the other stuff, and read it all independent of each other. And then we dedicated a day and sat down, went through it, but we weren't satisfied to just say, okay, now we've analyzed it, and this is what we think. The next step was, what do we do to put this into gear to protect the county? And so that's what this packet is, is the process that we came up with in a step-by-step-by-step basis of how we can protect the county and comply with what the U.S. Supreme Court says. Essentially, what it's saying is that if incarceration is now on the table, that we're still going to rely on the idea that if you don't pay your fines, at some point, it may be considered. We can no longer run from first base to third base. We have to touch second base. Second base is, we have to have a hearing. Now, it gets real murky here because here's what can happen in a scenario. A person comes in, doesn't have an attorney, willfully enters a plea of guilty, gets into a payment plan, doesn't honor it for whatever reason. We bring him back into court, and now he announces, I can't pay the fines because I've lost my job. At that point, that's where we have to question, is, are we talking about a potential incarceration? If we are, once he said he can't pay his fines, he's considered indigent, and we have to appoint him an attorney. So all of these things are not separate. They're all dovetailed and meshed together. Along with what we were talking about with the petitions, I've always said, and when I first started as a prosecutor, I was doing the petitions for contempt. And then that was changed. And I've never thought that was a good idea because I think it exposes the clerk, ultimately the county and the board, to liability. I have some immunity as the prosecutor built in. Clerks don't. So that should be processed through my office. Not like I'm looking for more work to do. We've got plenty to do over there, but it's just a necessary part of the job. So what this packet is, is the steps of what's necessary, and that starts with the second page, of what we have to do to walk through, to collect or to enforce these payment plans and contiffs of court. Now, along with that, I've included the forms that are necessary for us to document that we have done this. Keep in mind, the Justice Court is not a court where we have a court reporter taking down everything that's being said and done and all that sort of business. So it's just absolutely has to be documented that we have complied with what's necessary. So that's what these forms are that we've generated here. Some of the forms have been adapted, I've, we've adapted some of the forms we got from the Judicial College and things like that to make this all work. I want to call your attention over to one of the forms that we just, I just revised yesterday, which is Exhibit G. And if you'll see that, what happened was, is that we used to issue a warrant. Now, through the new rules of criminal procedure, the Supreme Court says we have to issue a summons first. Well, that created an interesting problem. We get somebody come into court, they agree to do a payment plan or they agree to do something, we issue them a summons. Well, currently, in some cases, they're coming back once a month to tell us that they're complying. That's a hardship on the people that are complying. And so what we came up with, and I'll be the first to tell you, if somebody can come up with something better, I'll steal it and make it work. And we came up with this, we heard about this, and I changed, so I came up with this idea and adapted it to our summons. What I want to do is summons people back and say, when can you, when can you get this paid in full? Add another month to it and give them a summons right then and say, listen, if you've paid it by this date, don't come back. If you haven't, you've already got your summons served, come back and explain to us. Now, they come back and say, I've lost my job, now we go back to the steps of having to take them through the hearing and a public defender and all that. But if they don't show up, we can go straight to the warrant. And so in addition to that, I added an extra box on our summons yesterday, and it says, if you have any documentation, proof of payment records, receipts, or evidence of any kind showing that this matter has been paid in full or that you are current in your obligation to the court, you're advised and commanded to bring said evidence with you to court on the above stated date. The reason I'm saying that is, is if you were upstairs in Justice Court, you would hear almost inevitably, I've already paid this. Do you have any receipts? Oh, I didn't know I had to bring receipts. So we're telling them on the front end, if you got receipts, if you got evidence, bring it when you come. Now, I can tell you, 99 out of 99 times, they don't have any receipts and they don't have any proof they paid it. They're just slinging that out there hoping that we're dumb enough to buy that. But in case they do, we want it, they can't walk out saying, I didn't know I was supposed to bring that. Attached to that is the petition for contempt, and then I've also walked through the rest of the process. All of this to say, this is going to, this is going to make a lot more complicated process of collecting and enforcing, and I think that's the key word, is enforcement of the sentences that have been rendered in Justice Court, especially involving fine money and payment of court costs. We have to do it if we want to do it. Now, the other option is just simply say, tell you what, we won't follow any of these rules. You don't pay, bah, what the heck. Well, I don't think anybody in this room wants to do that. So this is, to me, this is the only way we can go. And so we just have to, we have to do it. Comes to public defenders, right now, the judges are appointing people, as Judge McDaniel said, on an ad hoc basis. And I'm not sure that works particularly well. And when we start having to come, see, Justice Court on Tuesdays is the day that everybody comes to enter a plea. We'll have a courtroom full of people. And what this, these new rules and court decisions are saying is, that's when the folks have to raise the issue about whether they need an attorney. And if we don't have a public defender here, here's what's happening. They'll say, I need a lawyer. I can't afford one. We fill out a form, the judge appoints them an attorney. Now frankly, here's what happens. The judge, there's no lawyer there, there's no defense lawyer there. Right now, we don't have a public defender. And so he gives them an attorney's name and tells the defendant, it's your job to contact that lawyer. Now, here's what happens. About 60 to 70% of the time, all that is, is a head start to get the heck out of Dodge. They're not gonna find that lawyer, because now we have the lawyer coming in saying, I'm here, I got notified I was representing him, I tried to call him, he hadn't shown up, I haven't heard from him, whatever. But we gotta pay that lawyer for showing up to tell us that. So we, to me, we've wasted money, and we still don't have the defendant there. So if we had the public defenders there, they could handle it right now. Well, obviously, if we're gonna have the public defenders there, we need to have prosecutors there. So let me make sure we understand this, too. I need, I don't need another prosecutor. I'm not asking for another position. I'm not asking for that. I've got two of the best prosecutors, assistant prosecutors in the state of Mississippi working for me. All I need is to expand one of them's time. And the reason is, is now I've got to have a prosecutor upstairs on Tuesdays to handle these matters and to continue to go to county court on the appeals and to be there for the regular trial days. That's three different things. And then another problem is, when they bring the prisoners over there on the 48 hours. Now, that doesn't mean I won't be going to court, but I'm also gonna be tied up doing an awful lot more of working at the computer, cranking out these petitions for contempt and responding to the discovery requests, none of which do I have any control to say, I'm not gonna do it. The Supreme Court says I have to. So this is the problem that has been injected on top of us. I will say that we've gotten a handle on the Justice Court discovery. Pretty much, right now, we're able to handle it pretty well and appreciate the fact that you let us do a training session with the Justice Court clerks, because we were way, way ahead of everybody else when this thing hit. And we were able to even go and talk to some of the municipal court clerks and gave them a heads up, too, here in our county. And so I appreciate the fact that you did that. But these are the issues that are coming, and we felt like this is the time to let you all know before we start getting plowed into by outside folks who are looking to make a lot of money on attorney's fees and that sort of stuff. I'm open to questions.
Okay. So are we gonna need to hire a public defender for Justice Court?
I think you're gonna have to hire in plural.
Wow.
I don't think you can, I don't think you can hire just one guy and say, we want you there every Tuesday and every trial day and every time we bring prisoners over and expect one lawyer to do this as part-time. I don't think you're gonna have anybody be able to do it. I do not see the point in having a full-time public defender, because that opens the door of where are we gonna put him? I don't think that's, I don't think that's the issue either. And again...
So how you talking about paying by contract, by case? Is that how you do it?
I think by case would be a mistake. Because you're gonna have some folks that say, oh, is this speeding ticket? Must be the O.J. Simpson case. And run the clock. We don't need that. So I'm thinking something similar to what you have with the Circuit Court folks and just give that and go that route.
Richard, what's your timeframe we're talking about? I mean, I know probably today would be great, obviously, but...
It's, it's gonna have to be done. I don't think it's a, I don't...
It's an immediate issue.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a, like, if we don't have it by such and such a day, you know? What I'm trying to do is stay out and curve here, way out in front.
Yeah, and this is nothing for the upcoming budget cycle and like that. This is something immediate action-wise, what you're bringing to it.
Sooner or later. And I guess what I'm saying is, is that we're looking at a deadline. I don't know that anybody in the room has the deadline. I think the deadline could be some group coming in here from the outside.
Sure. Okay.
So you think you got enough public defender pool out there at both of them that will do this work?
Yes.
That's not a problem for us?
I do. I think, I think we do. And when I say that, also it's people who know and understand how the system works, that every single thing in Justice Court is not to be anticipated. See, if we're paying them a fixed rate, it's not to their advantage to drag everything out forever. It's wrap it up and let's go.
So you think you got enough pool, uh, public defender pool out there to pull from, that, that, what, do this work?
Yes.
That's not a problem for us?
I do. I think, I think we do. And, and, and when I say that, also, it's people who know and understand how the system works. That every single thing in Justice Court is not to be anticipated. See, if, if we're paying them a fixed rate, it's not to their advantage to drag everything out forever. Just wrap it up and let's go.
Richard, can you give the guys just a rough idea of what you're talking about with the assistant, kind of prosecutor position?
Well, right now, I have two assistants, they're part-time. One is Paul Holly, he's now serving part-time for me, and working with the Sheriff's Department part-time as their attorney. He's, he's maxed out in time. Paul, Mike Bowlen is my other assistant. Mike would be available to expand his time. I would like to see us just expand whatever he's got to do, so that he could be there on a more flexible basis, instead of just saying, well, he's only gonna show up for certain cases, which is the way we're doing it now, because that's all we need. I anticipate this could be a real snowball of, of paperwork and stuff, so we would need to have Mike, I, I would recommend Mike, he's certainly an experienced prosecutor. And be prepared to expand the number of hours, not call him full-time, but the advantage of Mike is also, from a budget standpoint, he's already an employee of the county, so he's already got all of the fringe benefit package and that sort of stuff, just talking about expanding his, his, uh, salary is, is what we would be talking about, but that would be going obviously with expanding his time. He would be spending a lot more time up here, uh, as prosecutor.
So we already pay him as a full-time employee? You're talking about basically give him a raise and resort to additional-
Well, he's not a full-time, he's a part-time.
He's part-time, he's got all of the, the-
He needs to work time, all of the defenders and the, um, assistants like that have no package to, um, their, their time system, because basically they're twenty hours.
So adding an employee plus the fringe, you already got it.
We're just adding, right.
Right, we're just, we're just adding, right, exactly.
So you make it, you want to make it full-time then, is that what you do, or just?
No, I don't want, I don't want to consider it full-time. Partially because I think we would have to actually go back to the legislature and go through that, create another. I don't want to go there. I just want to be able to say we can expand his time and compensate him for that, without making it full-time.
If he's part-time, very much wider?
Thirty hours?
And the other, the other part of this is, if we go full-time, then we gotta provide him office space and that sort of stuff. We don't have to do that either.
I'm good with what you're saying, I just want to see if there's a, we're gonna run into a stump over here.
All right.
Don't think there'll be a stump. Does anybody have any questions about that for Richard? It's really internal to Richard doing this, but opposite of the budget side of it comes to us, so y'all have an issue with how that affects that office's budget, we need to know.
I think we just need to get together, Ms. Lauren, get the numbers straight.
With all the additional discovery like that you're gonna have to have with justice, these guys are gonna handle that also, I, I assume, huh?
The, the guys, who are we talking about?
Yeah, you just talked about-
Okay. No, I, I, I'm handling the discovery.
For all cases.
Right, and the reason, I do all of the discovery, and the reason is, a practical approach. It's my office, it's the county computer, it's the county. If we go to the part-time guys, they're subsidizing it out of their own pocket. So, it's more of an administrative thing. I've already got all the files coming to me and coming through, so it just makes it more practical and easy for me to do it. And I'm the one that came up with how to do it anyway, so I want them out there in the courtroom handling that sort of stuff, uh, rather than sitting at a computer cranking out forms and that sort of business. But I have the telephone, I have the, I have the office administrator and that sort of thing.
You're gonna have a lot of extra hours too.
Yep. Well, I'm gonna be logging a lot more time sitting at the computer, I'm afraid.
You think I'll take care of Justin, you stand up?
Let me just add one thing to what Richard said, and he don't want to say this, but the fact of the matter is, when you got public defenders who are designated to do that, as opposed to ad hoc hiring of private lawyers, those private lawyers feel almost an obligation to do some discovery to cover their behind and all that. Our experience with our public defenders is, they got such a relationship with the prosecutors, we're not gonna jump through a bunch of unnecessary hoops just to cover somebody's behind. And they can move to, I mean, there'll be many of these cases that they get appointed, they talk to the guy five minutes, five minutes later he pleads guilty. And, you know, it, it would be a great saver of time and money, in my view, anyway, so.
I mean, we can do a lot of plea bargaining if I have a prosecutor up there on the same day that the public defenders are there, and I can do a lot more plea bargaining, rather than that built-in, okay, Mr. Defendant, now you go find this lawyer, which they don't intend to do. And so we're back to square one again.
So my, my understanding, Richard, what we're doing here today, this is oil financial, even like us on the financial side, that's our obligation. He's got his marching orders from Supreme Court, what he's got to do, but he did, you're just trying to bring us up to speed on what we're doing, who we're doing, who's responsible for what.
Exactly.
Hey, and, and to add to that, Bob, one other thing I want to be sure we leave, we, we understand that side of it, but also want, while we got Jessica here, to be sure she understands her exact role set up through you guys. I mean, I, I don't want to, I want to be sure she understands clearly her responsibilities on that same side, uh, to where she's, she's straight on what she needs to do.
And let me, let me say this too, and, and to be as positive as I can be. One, one of the advantages of being in Rankin County, and, and I'll speak strictly for myself, but I, I know how some other folks have reacted. We, in Rankin County, have a tremendous advantage in that all of the departments communicate with each other. We work together. Sometimes there's a difference of opinion, but we resolve it. When I go to the Prosecutor's Conference, I listen to some of the things that come back from other department conferences. It's like animosity everywhere. We don't have that here. All of this stuff that we've got in this packet was put together by me, Richard Lawrence, Mike Bowlen, Paul Holly, Jessica Massey, and, and some of my judges. I mean, we've all contributed to iron this thing out. That's why it's gonna work. As opposed to one person saying, okay, I've decided this is how it's gonna be. And so, with Jessica here, she can give you some other information about how, but all of this is, I mean, we've laughed over the, over the last years, I would bring this stuff up to her and say, well, I'm up here again with another form, can you look at this and tell me if you think this will work? And we've twisted and tweaked and modified and stuff to make it work. That's the whole point. Is we want to make all this work, and our folks have been tremendous. Richard Lawrence, through the Sheriff's Department, and Paul have been fantastic in the practical approach to this, and how that affects the Sheriff's Department and the jail and that sort of stuff. So, this is the culmination of all of that.
I don't want to put our Jessica court judges on the spot too much, but we've got some with us today. Now, Charlie, I would be curious to know, do you have anything that you can add to the procedure?
Just strongly echo what Judge McDaniel and Richard communicated to you men, and, uh, really ever since House Bill 585, this county vehemently opposed. It's, yeah, I kind of moved to a catch and release and, uh, kind of mentality. Couple that with these rules, there's a very fine microscope, certainly looking at counties like Rankin County to say, you guys better be doing it right. And we are blessed and fortunate to have, you know, four judges that gonna work together, happen to be lawyers, and I know lawyers mess up a lot of stuff, in this particular case, we're gonna get it right, certainly to protect the interest of the county, but at the same time, to afford the accused what they're entitled to under these, these new rules, even though there may be some differences that I believe are wrong, but Supreme Court has spoken, and I'm under oath to follow those, those rules. I, I just echo what these, these men said too.
Great, thank you Judge Fairland.
Josh, do you have any?
Judge LaCorne, sorry.
There's nothing, nothing I need to add, but I, I do agree with everything that's been said so far.
I don't have anything to add.
Jessica, do you have any? Y'all, this is good for you?
It, it's all good, man. Like Richard said, we've spent numerous hours together going over this process, and I think this is, is gonna work the best.
All right, from the board's standpoint, anything, Bob?
What we need to do over the next minute, that's what we need to do.
Sounds like we don't have a choice.
We, we need to get y'all some, uh, Ms. Aron, I need to work on giving you some calculations together to, to understand precisely what the impact to the prosecutor's office will be based on the request, but I, I think we can have that ready for you quickly.
Okay.
Jessica, uh, just, just so that it's clear on the record, as an employee of the board, I, I, we felt like this would be a good opportunity for you here from the board. I think I'll put words in your mouth, but this is just sort of sum it up. We would like for you, as an employee of the board, to follow the, uh, the direction of prosecutor and Justice Court judges. Obviously, we want that to work. But the board, I think the board's position is gonna be, we want this to be the procedure that the prosecutor has outlined, and so, um, I think the board would, would want to stress that your office would come under more control of prosecutor with respect to this contempt process specifically, uh, and that your office would be, uh, in lockstep with prosecutor and follow that, that procedure, and, and not have any sort of procedure that did not match up with what Richard said. I think that could be the position of the board.
Yeah, it sounds like y'all got it worked out.
So, if, if there were any directions that came your way that would be different from what the prosecutor is outlining here, then I think the board is, would be, would want to encourage you to come to the board immediately, and let's talk about that. We, we would not want the procedure to be different for different areas of Justice Court.
I think y'all got it worked out, and you got the direction. I think that's the way it needs to be. You, you're good with it, you are part of it, so.
All right, Ms. Slade, you good with everything? Yes, sir, Judge.
Let me see, one other thing too. The appointing authority needs to be this board for these public defenders. They don't need to be beholden to him, they don't need to be beholden to the judges, they need to be independent. So whenever it's worked out, and I think that's the way they do with the, uh, certain public defenders, the chief judge recommends people, but this board is the one that has to hire them, and this needs to be that same process to keep them from being beholden to anybody.
I got you.
All right, Ms. Slade.
Yes, uh, I would ask Richard to, uh, really, very briefly, Richard, that's not meant as a, as a shot at you, but this, this treatise here was, is more than enough. If you could get us a one-page
Don't be a big page.
Executive summary of, of, of how you would propose that this board entertain the, a recommendation, receiving recommendations on public defenders that could be appointed, and the cost associated with them.
We'll be able to take some action, exactly. That'll give us a steering point to get some action taken for you, okay? And again, Ms. Slade, anything else? We're good, again, let me thank each of y'all's time, I know time's precious for everybody, so again, thank you for coming in, and, and any additional comments? We'll be sure the floor's open for that. All right, great. Uh, any other additional business, Ms. Oster, Mr. Slade?
I make a motion to adjourn to Monday morning at nine o'clock.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Morrow to adjourn, adjourned, second by, uh, Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All of us say aye. Any opposed with a like sign? Thanks, Bob.